All right. Good morning, everyone. It is March fourteenth, nine a.m. We are here for a, our regular commission meeting. Called the meeting to order and ask John to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Ask the clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
We do. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: Notice of Liquor License Application for Taylor Station LLC and Special Occasion Liquor License Applications for Karen Hillburn Cancer Fund, Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group, and the Washington Indian Gaming Association. Tessa Halloran sent in an Advisory Board application for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Hood Canal Communications sent in notice regarding the basic cable television rate increasing to $119.95 per month effective April one, 2023. The Port of Port Angeles sent in a letter regarding their foreign trade zone application. City of Shelton sent in a notice of postponed action date for an annexation request to annex the Peacock Ridge area into Shelton city limits. North Mason Fire sent in a letter regarding their partnership with Mason County. And Ken Van Buskirk sent in a letter regarding the Roy Bode Apartments.
Great, thank you so much. Let's move on to item four point two, Days of Caring. Richard.
Morning Commissioners. Richard Dickinson, Public Works Utility Waste Management Deputy Director, here with a news briefing, 2023 Days of Caring Free Dump Vouchers. In partnership with Mesa County Public Works and Republic Services, United Way of Mesa County and Youth Connections of Belfair, we'll be handing out vouchers for the twenty-three, 2023 Days of Caring. Starting March fifteenth, 2023, vouchers will be available at the following locations on a first come, first served basis. United Way of Mesa County office will have three hundred available from Monday through Friday, ten a.m. to two p.m. at five thirty-six West Railroad Avenue, Shelton, Washington. Youth Connection of Belfair's office, Monday through Friday, twelve to five p.m. at twenty-three, two-nine-nine Northeast Highway Three, Belfair, Washington. Hundred and fifty vouchers will be available. To receive a voucher, you must fill out the required paperwork, have a valid I.D., and proof of Mason County address. Vouchers will only cover one thousand pounds of household garbage redeemable at Mason County Landfill at five oh one East Eels Hill Road, Shelton, Washington. Vouchers must be used by June thirteenth, 2023. For any questions, please contact United Way of Mesa County at three six zero four two six four nine nine nine, or Youth Connections of Belfair, three six zero two seven seven five zero one seven. More information regarding the voucher process and items covered and not covered by the voucher is available on the Mason County Utilities and Waste Management Solid Waste webpage.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item four point three. This is our Timberland Regional Library Spring Presentation. And ask Cheryl. Good morning, Cheryl.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Can, how are you?
Awesome. I'm awesome. How are you?
Awesome also.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to provide to you the 2022 State of the Library and several 2023 initiatives. As you know, Timberland Regional Library serves five hundred and fifty thousand people in Pacific, Lewis, Grace Harbor, Mason, and Thurston Counties. Before I begin, I would like to say thank you on behalf of the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees for your appointment of Dr. Cansebi to the board. With me today is Trustee Hal Blanton, representing Lewis County. Uh, Erin Stump is online too on Zoom. Uh, she's our Shelton Library Manager. Jenny Grenfell is our North Mason Library Manager. And Annie Bowers might be in the audience, because I can't see everybody in the audience. Uh, she's our Hootsport Library Manager. You should have received the annual report for 2022. It's also available at t r l dot o r g. Just like in previous years prior to 2022 and throughout 2022, Timberland Regional Library continued to innovate and adapt to changing needs as staff demonstrated their nimbleness and adaptability to changing circumstances. I want to take this opportunity to thank the two hundred and forty-five staff across the five county region for their continued resilience, collaboration, and can-do-iness. Here are the highlights of the, of 2023 specifically in Mason County based on Timberland Regional Library's 2020 to 2024 strategic direction, focusing on local communities and increasing the library's presence in underserved communities, partnering with agencies to support diverse communities, and empowering children from birth to five. So in 2022, we worked with the City of Shelton and we refreshed the Shelton Timberland Library with new flooring, paint, and furniture to the tune of half a million dollars. And half of that half a million was in terms of the products themselves. The other half was in terms of the, the work that our staff did. We also added expanded access hours at the Hootsport Library. And so this means that for people who have a library card with us in good standing and you are eighteen years of age and older, you can, uh, sign up and get a key card access to the Hootsport Timberland Library, where you can access that library beyond the time the staff are there. So that means it's seven a.m. to eight p.m. daily, including Sundays, including holidays. I wanted to share with you that at the end of January 2023, we have seventy-six library users who are using the Hootsport Timberland Library in this way. In terms of circulation during the time when the staff are not there, it's about seven percent overall of, of physical circulation during EAH hours and fourteen percent of internet sessions during these hours. This means that in addition to the twenty-nine staff hours per week at Hootsport, EAH gives an additional sixty-two hours a week, which means that people have access to do, you know, apply for jobs, et cetera, uh, ninety-one hours per week. Hootsport Timberland Library also received a new exterior sign, a hillside redo, and interior painting in 2022. And also in 2022, there were additional new open hours in all the Mason County libraries. And so, uh, that, uh, increases to nine additional staff hours in terms of, uh, new open hours in 2022. So I'm here today to also share that beginning April first of this year, the Shelton Library will increase from forty-nine, sorry, from fifty-four to sixty hours per week, because beginning April one, they will be open on Sundays from ten to four. And of course, expanded access hours in addition to, to Hootsport. Uh, MacLeary Timberland Library was the first one to receive and go through that pilot in 2019. And since, and last year, we opened up EAH at Ocean Park, Packwood, Hootsport, Elma, and Mesa Libraries, which means that your key card access gives you the same access seven a.m. to eight p.m. daily. The reason why I'm sharing so many details about this, this topic is because that is the number one thing that people ask for. Early access, evening access, and Sunday hours access. And like you, we are limited by the one percent per year as a government entity. So this was the compromise in terms of finding a way to address people's requests. Now, in terms of 2022 statistics, physical checkouts increased from 2021 to 2022 by thirteen percent. Overdrive checkouts, and overdrive is downloadable eBooks and e-magazines and e-audiobooks, uh, increased by nine percent. And then active patrons between 2016 and 2022, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty active patrons in Mason County. That's out of a population of sixty-six thousand, two hundred. So now for the highlights in all the five counties. We opened with new library hours at all the twenty-nine libraries at the beginning of 2022. We had a return to in-person summer library programs and in the fall, in-person storytime. We opened Timberland's twenty-ninth library called the Hawks Prairie Timberland Library. This is a Lucky Day demonstration library, which means that it's your lucky day, because it's a bestseller in multiple, um, formats and for all ages. You don't have to place a hold on anything. And it's a demonstration library, because we're demonstrating to the public and to everyone that it's very needed in that location. It, we opened it up with a three-year lease at eighty-two oh five Martin Way. And I want to remind our listeners too that your library card is good at all twenty-nine libraries. Uh, we introduced Grow a Reader, which is an early literacy activity for ages birth to six and their caregivers, whereby you can track the child's favorite books as the child grows up. We introduced iPads for in-library use. So every library has multiple iPads that people can check out to access information. We expanded the library of things to include new stargazing kits, kitchen tools, plankton kits from the Pacific Shellfish Institute, and early math backpacks with a grant from the Capital STEM Alliance. We have ten of these math backpacks at the Shelton Library and ten right now at the Chehalis Timberland Library. And we hope to receive, you will be receiving additional funding from the Capital STEM Alliance to add additional math backpacks. In addition to all that, we added additional fishing kits for adults and children and, uh, checkout Washington kits that also include Discover passes. We refreshed the MacLeary Timberland Library. We issued over five thousand, uh, new library cards during the September library card signup month. And we also provided six new library card designs. We also opened up on Sundays at the West Olympia Timberland Library. So also in 2022, uh, we issued fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eight new library cards and we welcomed twelve thousand and one new overdrive patrons. And for the first time ever, we were part of an article for overdrive where we, uh, we got to over a million downloads with overdrive. Staff answered three thousand, four hundred and forty-three emails from patrons and live chatted with the public seven thousand, forty-two times. We also created two hundred and thirty-nine grab bags. And these are grab bags for people who like a certain type of book and they want a surprise in terms of additional books around that kind of, the same, similar topic. In 2023, the highlights include a refresh of the Ilwako Timberland Library, as well as expanded access hours with that library as well. The West Olympia Timberland Library is currently doubling in size and we're reopening today as a soft opening from two to six. And I wanted to point out that West Olympia Timberland Library, we, we see people from all the counties, Mason, all of the counties. Um, all libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system across the five county region. And we are partnering with the Childcare Action Council, with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, birth to five, uh, where the child, once they sign up, receives a free book monthly, which is about sixty books once the child turns five. We're working also with Grace Harbor United Way and Lewis County United Way. We know that there's an approximate twenty-nine thousand children, birth to five, in this region. One-sixth of them have, are signed up for Dolly Parton right now. And I just, uh, started attending the Mason County Broadband Action Team meetings. And I hope to be able to continue attending those and helping fill out the, the plan. As always, I would like to end on a quote that is relevant to the times we are living in. Libraries will get you through times of no money better than money will get you through times of no libraries. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners?
Just a comment. Um, just Cheryl, Commissioner Schutte. Thank you for attending the broadband action team meeting yesterday, as well as your staff has also been, um, really committed to the opioid stakeholder group. Uh, that I saw a couple of your, your staff at the meeting last week and just appreciate, um, you know, your ability to, to get to these other community, uh, community meetings and, and represent the library and what you all can bring to the table of meeting some of these challenges in our community. So just a, just a word of thanks.
You're very welcome. Yes, we're very, I'm very aware of the opioid meetings. I do get the, the emails. And, um, I wanted to let everyone know that our staff are trained for it. It's up to them to decide to, to get, to use it, to administer it. Um, and that we do get free Narcan from the lo, from the local Department of Health, Health.
Excellent.
Very cool. Yeah, Cheryl, I wanted to thank you too. You and I are on a couple, um, committees together and you are delightful to work with. And I really enjoy, um, your, uh, I just enjoy you being on the committees that, that we're both on. So I wanted to thank you for that. Also, I wanted to thank you too. I know that, um, you and your staff have reached out to individuals, um, recently and, um, were very helpful. So I want to thank you and your staff for, for communicating with them and for your help.
You're very welcome.
Anything else? All right, Cheryl, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank your staff for us too. I'll see you on a library tour, tour soon.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number, I'm throwing my glasses on so I can make sure I'm counting right. Item number five, open forum for citizens input. This is the time we set aside to give the, uh, public the opportunity to address the commission, um, on items that are not on today's agenda. If so, if you wish to address the commission, please raise your hand. The chair will recognize you. And, um, I ask that you keep your comments professional. Um, no obscene or profane language, no personal attacks, respect others. Um, demonstrations in support or opposition to a speaker or idea are not permitted in the commission chambers. So that being said, do we have anyone in the room that would like to address the commission? Okay, anyone in the Zoom room? Please raise your hand. Uh, we'll recognize you and, um, calling you. Anyone in the Zoom room?
I would like to speak. I don't know where I raised my hand.
No worries.
Sorry.
That's okay. Please state your name and where you live.
Uh, my name is Cynthia Stang and I live in Hootsport.
Okay. You have three minutes, go for it.
Um, I'm speaking today in concern of the resolution under consideration expanding the authority of the county administrator. I don't know if that's been decided yet, but, um, you were speaking about it last week.
Absolutely.
So county administrator is a position that's appointed, not elected. Um, the, you, the commissioners are elected, therefore you're accountable to the voters of Mason County. And, but the county administrator is not. So from what I understood from the meeting last week is that the, um, the resolution is redefining and expanding that position, the county administrator, and would be, um, allowing that position, person that position to, um, to be able to sign off on contracts under fifty thousand dollars and, um, also to, um, extend expiring contracts. So as a voter, this concerns me, because this person is not elected. Uh, so they are not accountable. I am hoping that you can confirm to me that you, as commissioners, are making these decisions that affect us, our budget here in Mason County, um, that you're making the decisions and then the administrator is just carrying through the paperwork. So, um, I don't know if you want to address that now, but, um, I, I don't, I definitely not, uh, in favor of one person, uh, whoever that administrator is, is making budget decisions on, on their own, even if it's under fifty thousand, I still think that's a large amount of money. So thank you very much.
All right, thank, thank you Cynthia. Um, I believe that that item was on our agenda last week.
Briefing.
A briefing.
Yeah, nothing, nothing has been brought to your regular agenda yet.
Okay. All right, so that was briefed last week. It's not on our agenda yet, but, um, we will definitely remember your comments. And we appreciate them. All right, thank you Cynthia. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission? All right, seeing none. Let's go on to item number six.
Madam Chair, I move to adoption of today's agenda as presented.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Moving on to item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the February twenty-seventh, 2023 briefing minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the February twenty-seventh, 2023 briefing minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, approval of action, of the action agenda. Commissioners will read through the action agenda. Um, after we read through it, we will open it up for, um, items to be removed for separate discussion or vote. Commissioner Schutte, if you could take items eight point one through eight point six. Commissioner Netherland, eight point seven through eight point twelve. And I will take eight point thirteen through eight point sixteen.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, item eight point one, approval of warrants and treasurer electronic remittances. Claims clearing fund warrant numbers eight zero nine four two zero eight through eight zero nine four six five zero in the amount of two million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and twenty-seven cents. Direct deposit fund warrant numbers nine four four one zero through nine four eight one zero in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Salary clearing fund warrant number seven zero zero seven two zero five through seven zero zero seven two two eight in the amount of six hundred and forty thousand, ninety dollars and thirty-four cents. And treasurer electronic remittance in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Item eight point two, approval of the following 2023 Mason County Heritage Grants. Mason General Hospital Foundation's Arts Commission Chapter for five thousand dollars. McReeve House Museum of Hood Canal for five thousand dollars. North Bay Historical Society for five thousand dollars. Peninsula Railway and Lumbermans Museum for two thousand dollars. And Pickering Homemakers Club, Doing Businesses Pickering Community Club, for five thousand dollars for a total amount of twenty-two thousand dollars. Item eight point three, approval of the Choice Regional Health Network Youth Cannabis and Commercial Tobacco Prevention Program Contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and one cent. Item eight point four, approval to authorize the county engineer to submit the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant for safety improvements on Shelton Matlock Road from milepost one point seven six to milepost seven point six seven, and approval to authorize the chair to sign all pertinent documents for the grant. Item eight point five, approval to execute the notification of final cost of county road construction projects completed in 2022 performed by county forces in the amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. And item eight point six, approval to authorize the transfer of funds from beginning fund balance in the amount of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Approval of the resolution for county road project number twenty forty-eight to replace the Rock Creek Bridge superstructure. Approval for the county engineer to procure the bridge structure from the apparent low bidder, True North Steel Bridge, and approval for the county engineer and chair to sign all pertinent documents for the project.
Madam, Madam Chair, item eight point seven reads, approval of the resolution for the sole source purchase from, uh, correct equipment of seventy-five, seven-five grinder pumps and conversion kits for a total of two hundred and twelve dollars, eight, or two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Item eight point eight, approval to sign a letter of support for the Port of Port Angeles application for foreign zone, foreign trade zone F T Z in the proposed service area of Clowen County, uh, North Olympic Peninsula. Item number eight point nine, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, April fifth, 2023 at nine fifteen a.m. to consider the rezone of parcels two two one two nine dash three four dash nine zero zero zero, uh, two. And, uh, two two one two nine dash three four dash nine zero 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 three and two two one two nine dash three four dash nine zero 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 four from rural residential five, R R five, to rural commercial two, R C two. Item number eight point one zero, approval to reappoint or to appoint the following applicants to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, the SWAC. Thomas Stuffield to represent District One. Sharon Trask to represent local elected officials. Tessa Halloran, uh, to represent special group agriculture. And to reappoint Linda Lynx to represent District Three. Delroy Cox to represent business. And Chad White to represent the solid waste industry. Item number eight point one one, approval of resolution of county road project number two zero four six, Bear Creek to Water Road, milepost point four three to milepost one point zero two to realign the roadway to improve the horizontal curves with wider lanes and shoulders paved with hot mix asphalt. And approval for the county engineer and the chair to sign all pertinent documents. Item number eight point one two, approval of a resolution for the county road project number two zero four seven, Skokomish Valley Road, milepost three point eight zero to milepost four point six zero to preserve and improve access to the Upper Skokomish River Valley and Olympic National Forest by stabilizing, strengthening, and elevating the roadway and improving drainage. And approval for the county engineer and chair to sign all pertinent documents.
Item eight point thirteen, approval to issue a request for proposals for food concessions at Mason County recreational area for the spring and summer of 2023. Item eight point fourteen, approval of the APSME memorandum of understanding for point two five percent and closing out the Me Too clause of the 2020 through 2022 collective bargaining, bargaining agreement. Item eight point fifteen, approval for li pay for Tom Gibbons in the assessor's office from March sixteenth, 2023 through December thirty-first, 2023. Item eight point sixteen, approval for li pay for Rose Mountain in the public defender's office from March sixteenth, 2022, 2023 through December thirty-first, 2023. Okay, having read through today's action agenda, are there any items that you would like to be removed for separate vote or discussion? All right. Any items the public would like to, to have removed for separate discussion or vote?
I just have a correction on eight point nine. The need requested for a vote, it should be eight point twenty-fifth, not fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone in the Zoom room? All right, seeing none. Um, do we have any additional discussion?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda as presented with the addition of a change in, uh, date for item number eight point nine from April fifth to April twenty-fifth.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda and changing item eight point nine's date from April fifth to April twenty-fifth, 2023. Any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Signify.
Aye.
People are all up here. We try, but sometimes the, the words don't come out like we're supposed to.
Or maybe they do and it's just not.
Yeah.
So any opposed? Hearing, the action agenda is approved. Phew, alrighty.
Been watching the old Dead End, nobody here is old enough to remember that. Dead End Kids used to talk just like that. It was a TV show.
Maybe I watched it and did not.
Yeah.
I don't know. All right, let's move on to item number nine, um, other business. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to address the commission or to say anything? Anything at all? Mark.
Um, I'd, I'd like to, uh, clarify the discussion that we had in our briefing about county administrator roles and responsibilities uh, for Cynthia and for the public. Um, and happy to answer any questions Cynthia, if you want to call me later and be happy to discuss that with you. But, um, the purpose of it was not to provide the county administrator with budget authority, but to, the authority to sign contracts that were already approved within the budget. So the budget for a department or office is approved by the county commissioners. Included in that budget is often, um, projects that need to happen. Um, so those, those projects that were under fifty thousand dollars, uh, we would like to have the county administrator have the ability to sign those contracts. If a contract is not completed by the original date that we requested and it, there's no budgetary impact to it, um, then be able to, to sign an extension onto that contract. So that was the purpose of it. It wasn't to, to give the county administrator the authority to, um, allocate additional budget.
Great.
And again, be happy to answer any questions Cynthia, if you'd like to, to talk to me offline.
Thank you, Mark, for the clarification.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, anyone else? Any? In the Zoom room? Not seen.
Sure Dave, it looks like, I mean, look.
I know, it looks like it. He's, he's holding back on us.
Going once?
The chair could designate a guest speaker and have him come to the podium if she wants.
We do have a few in the room. We do have a few in the room. All right. Let's move on to item number ten. Um, this is time we set aside for public hearing. And this is continuation of our public hearing from Sep- or September, wow, February twenty-eighth to consider amending the Mason County Code Title Fifteen Development Code to add the hearing examiner's authority in Mason County Code Title Seventeen zoning code to allow higher residential densities within the Shelton urban growth area by use of the city of Shelton's planned unit development standards. I ask staff to come forward.
All right, good morning, Cal Rowan with Mason County Community Development. Uh, and so just to um, I'll um give background like I did a couple of weeks ago uh that this is a code amendment to Title Fifteen uh giving hearing examiner authority over uh review of planned unit developments and then Title Seventeen, which would give um the uh county the ability to review projects in the Shelton urban growth area that have residential uh density or residential development that's going to utilize city sewer and water that they would be able to plan under a planned unit development and we would review the standards that the city of Shelton uses. Um, this would allow for um additional density of residential units within the Shelton urban growth area that our existing zoning does not allow for. Um, we are at about half of what the planned unit development um would allow. And the uh planning staff did work with the city of Shelton uh and and this was uh something that we jointly thought would benefit both the the county and and the city in the future if they were to annex this uh development in their future city limits and it would meet their existing standards. Great, thank you. Any questions for Steph?
Any questions from um anyone in the room or the Zoom room for Steph? All right, not seeing any. Thank you, Cal.
Sure.
Do we have a public comment? I know that we did receive some um correspondence. Mackenzie, could you go through that again, just one more time?
Uh, yes, let me. Um, we received letters of support from Jennifer Baria of the Economic Development Council. And letter of support from Sam Si, James Schweigert, Rob Barnes for Senator McEwen, and Kristen French from, I believe, the PUD. And Angela Barnes also.
Great, great, thank you.
P D three?
Oh, and.
Angela Barnes was from Remax.
Did we also receive a letter from P D three from Anette Creek Farm? It looks like it's in the packet, that's why. I mentioned it.
That wasn't sent directly to me.
It could have been part of the CIPA, probably, yeah.
Confirmation and nots. All right, thank you.
Let the record show, heads nodded, yes.
All right. Um, let's move on to commissioner deliberation and or emotion and or emotion.
Uh, so last two weeks ago, I went ahead and I agreed to move forward so that we can have a third commissioner and also have another commissioner go out and go forward to look into it. And I understood when I did that, that uh I believe that this this will pass. But at the same time, I think it's inappropriate for one person to stand in the way because we could have, it was a technicality because we didn't have a commissioner, to just stand in the way and let it die when I knew in my heart that the other ones were going to vote for it, so that's why I went ahead and moved forward. But I still wanted to express that I am not against anything that they've put together. What they put together is wonderful, we need the ability to do these type of things. I'd like to see it done in much in many more places. The only issue that I take with it is that we have a forced um no contest to annexation. And with that, it changes just how easy it is to annex it and to change it. Our staff and everybody will do all the work, they'll be able to reap the benefits. But it disenfranchises those future voters that come in. When there's a hundred, two hundred, three hundred homes built on these properties, they won't know because it's county, they won't know that they don't have the right to to have a vote and determine whether or not they will be annexed. And I do understand that this is the majority of what most uh cities would do as as we're going out. But I also believe that Mason County can do better because we know better. We know we can do better. There's an aspect that comes with it that others don't think about, aside from the disenfranchising people from uh their future vote. There is the taxation issue, not just that it has an effect on us the years that that happens. The greatest taxation issue occurs when you take two, three, five hundred homes out of the equation. Our taxes are spread out amongst everybody, we use a pie, people don't realize how our taxation works, we have a pie. When we set our levy rate, we set a pie. Now, what it is, is everybody that's within that pie pays their share to get to the levy rate, that's how it works. When you take a chunk of that pie out, everybody else has to pay for that because the pie size does not shift, the pie stays the same. So now you've actually made it easier for uh, not easier, it becomes an automatic tax increase on all those that are still inside the pie without the ability to to work with it. And again, as I said, every other aspect of this is wonderful and I think we could have easily and should easily add it as an addition that the hearings examiner will make sure that there is not an inclusion of a no contest uh provision in acquiring these these rights to utilize the sewer and and their the water, the city water. And I want to point out that Mason County itself, not the city, but Mason County itself has put millions of dollars into that sewer and we continue to pay into that sewer every single year. So why can't our residents get that benefit of that? And we're not denying the city anything, the city could still annex, the city can do everything they could do beforehand. We're just saying that you don't force the people for the future to do it. Again, I realize that it's a good thing. I just think that it can be set up in a way to where we can protect the future of Mason County, protect the residents, the future residents of Mason County, and at the same time still provide these things because I do believe that even though the city may say they wouldn't do it or whatever, they want the, they need the hookups, they just did a huge increase on their rate pairs. Why would they not want the free hookups if they can get it? Because the developer pays for it. Unlike Mason County, the developer pays to do all their infrastructure. And with that, they get the free hookups with it, and so they get the benefit. It would not be wise on their part when they're begging for more people, more hookups, to say, no, we're not going to do it because you won't sign that paper. So I think it's in our responsibility, and that's why I brought that up last week. But I want to make clear, I do not uh begrudge the commission for voting to support this exactly as it's written because no matter what, it is still a great piece of work that was done. There's still great benefit to our community. I just won't be voting for it when it comes up because of that one aspect of it because I can't just let that go, I think it's my responsibility to protect them all.
Great. Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion. Um, I move approval of the ordinance amending Mason County Code Title Fifteen Development Code to add the hearing, to add to the hearing examiner's authority in Mason County Code Title Seventeen zoning code to allow higher residential densities within the Shelton urban growth area by use of the city of Shelton's planned unit development standards.
And I'll second that. All right, so we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a couple of comments. Um, first off, I I appreciate the opportunity to be able to weigh in on this. This is a, I think, a really important um piece of uh of code amendments that we're considering here today, and I certainly appreciate where Commissioner Netherland is coming from in in his rationale for for opposing this. There's there's no daylight between the three commissioners on our recognition that we need housing in this community. We're on lockstep on that. Um, and I think this is, this is uh that that's clear in these uh these code amendments. And, you know, we sit in these meetings with the city council and we talk about, you know, shared vision and we talk about opportunities and everybody kind of nods their head and we knew, you know, we got to do this, we got to do that. And and honestly, and and this is, you know, this is just the way things go, a lot of times nothing happens. Something happened here, though. We all sat around and nodded our head and said, we want more housing, we need to have parity between our planning, uh our codes, our development regulations. And Cal Rowan and her team got together with Jay Hill and his team and they put together uh and they put together some amendments that would move us in that direction. We don't know, I mean, look, the economy is what it is. We don't know necessarily that any particular project is going to move forward in any part of the UGA because of these code amendments alone. There's still a lot of decision making that has to happen on the private sector side in order to turn dirt, to even think about submitting a permit for a project. Now, we got some letters of support for this from people who are considering projects and I I'll give them the benefit of the doubt and say they have a great plan and they're going to move forward and they're going to do all this, but we don't ever make decisions based on that alone. And so we don't know that that's certainly going to happen. And in my time on the planning commission, Commissioner Netherland's time on the planning commission, when we had to consider things like rezones, uh we were never, we were never doing that because we knew that that applicant for sure was going to do whatever. This is the, this is the same, it's a similar concept here. We don't know what's going to happen, we don't know the future. But what we also know is that the city, all cities, have to be really methodical in how they approach annexation. The city right now is is looking at annexing three hundred plus acres uh on Peacock Ridge up behind Olympic uh Olympic College. The city has to think years and years and years ahead uh in order to plan for any kind of annexation. Another great example for, you know, like if you build it, they're going to annex it, uh not necessarily being the case, is tractor supply. The city is absolutely dependent on sales tax way more than we are. Our sales tax numbers have been super strong in the county because we've actually done a lot of work uh in Belfair, which generates a ton of our sales tax revenue. But when you look at what the city balances their budget on, it's in large part sales tax. If they were interested or they could serve it, they'd have absolutely taken the tractor supply area and this whole, this whole area with it. But there's a, there's a pattern, there's a process. Um, and so I I think, you know, it's a little bit premature to assume that we're going to do this in 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 a year or in six months, uh the city's going to come in and annex it. I I I think that uh, you know, they have their own capacity issues, not just at the at the utility side, but also just at the staffing side. They also think about, they also have to think about um policing and road services and all the other things that come along with it. And so when we look at this, you know, we all agree, we need more housing. It benefits the community as a whole, a strong Shelton is a strong Mason County, a strong Mason County is a strong Shelton. Uh, I really believe that, and I think this moves us in a in a step uh in in a positive direction with uh the city in order to be able to plan for our shared future, be able to continue to work with them on what annexation might look like or might not look like, what those timelines are. Uh, and and, you know, people will continue to have uh if not a vote on annexation, certainly on a vote, uh a vote on people who represent them in these positions. And I think uh I'm I'm willing to stand up and say that I listened to the people and and supported a proposal that would bring housing an opportunity to our community and we'll figure out the annexation part of it uh with the right time.
All right, thank you. And just real quick, I, one of the the main reasons I wanted to have this extended was so that I could do my research and so I could be confident in my decision. I reached out to a very good friend of mine um uh that works with cities and asked him if he could help me understand more. And so I reached out to him, he connected with me with MRSC. Um, they responded quickly, they're a great resource, by the way, if anybody wants to use them. And and then um I also listened and read the the planning commission's meeting during this or the hearing for this and was very interested in the responses during that that meeting. They, the public that testified made good comments and uh the commission had great questions. Um, I'm comfortable with their recommendation to move this forward. So please thank the planning commission for me because they they do an excellent job. So um do we have any further discussion?
Yes. I just want to say um, as for the MRSC and stuff, they're they are great. And but just because something is common or something happened doesn't mean it can't be changed and we can't do things differently here in Mason County, especially if it's better for our citizens. Um, I'm standing against it because, as I said before, I believe that my job is also to protect the future voters of that area as well as the tax base for ourselves. As for, we can work out the annexation later, no we can't. If they sign that paper that they will not contest it, you don't work it out. And the difference between tractor supply and this situation, tractor supply and all the the property owners between there that they would annex has a vote. They won't have that if we do this without a change. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with anything they put together because it's not. What I am saying is Mason County can do it better and we can protect everybody with just a sing- single action. And I do believe the city would continue to move forward with it. If they didn't, I would really be surprised because as I said before, they need the hookups and they want the housing too. We're given everything here, this is county land that we're talking about doing all these provisions on. We should be also taking care of the county as we're putting it together. So with that, I'll be uh standing against the motion. But I, as I said before, thank you for all your hard work. You did put together something pretty wonderful, it's just that one aspect that I I just can't go along with it on.
All right. Without further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. All right, great. That was, oh, good discussion. Appreciate the work that my fellow teammates do.
It was good that our staff thought outside the box to put something like this together because this is outside the box, I did some research, there's a few places that are doing it, but not like like you did it, you you were making a comment in the beginning about how you're taking some of the pieces to simplify it, it sounded like you're copying and pasting. I didn't find a lot for you to copy and paste from, so uh I'm sure they're doing it elsewhere, but there was a lot of work that went into it, at least from what I could find.
Well, I had lots of help, I did not do this in the back.
Okay. But great job, all your staff.
Tim Whitehead delivered, so shout out to him.
Very good. All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to item number eleven, board calendars and reports. This is the time we set aside to go through our calendars and our report out. Uh, Commissioner Schuetti, if you could go first, Commissioner Netherland, and then I will follow.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I had a, just a couple of quick updates from last week. Um, had two really uh great meetings or events that I wanted to mention. One, I had a meeting with uh Mindy Rule, who's the president and CEO of the South Sound Community Foundation. Um, and they're really interested in in working here in our local community to support um options for youth mental health. Um, and so it'd probably be more of a conversation with with our folks in public health about that and some of the other providers in the in the neighborhood. But um definitely appreciate that philanth- uh philanthropic organization wanting to step up and and support um some efforts in the community, especially related to um adverse childhood experiences and trauma-informed care, so really optimistic about what partnership, what what that could create. Uh, then I had an opportunity to attend uh at Memorial Hall on Saturday um our our VFW district honored uh first responders and and there were two uh first responders from our community that were that were um that received commendations on Saturday. Uh, one is Deputy Ellison from our sheriff's uh sheriff's office. Uh, it was great to see him receive that recognition as well as Katie Haskins from MaceCom, uh so one of our nine-one-one dispatchers. And so really cool to come together with all of the uh VFW folks from across our region to celebrate first responders and then uh kids in kids in grade school and junior high who wrote essays um on uh, you know, their um sort of civic responsibility and civic duty. So just a a really great event. Um, and it was great for us to host it here in Shelton at Memorial Hall in our in our uh historic building over there and and invite people from all over to to spend that day with us. Um, going forward, uh have um a meeting with uh Mason Health uh on our Behavioral Health Coalition uh meetings. Uh, also have a meeting with MaceCom and I'll be attending the TVW Gala tonight. Uh, have the Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board has a special meeting uh tomorrow as well as a meeting of the Hood Canal Coordinating Council. Uh, and then I'll be heading to UW Tacoma on Thursday for an Economic Development Roundtable with Congressman Kilmer and uh under Assistant Secretary Alfred from uh the Economic Development Administration. I'm just looking forward to that. Uh, also have the uh Naco Western Region uh States Meeting on Thursday afternoon. Um, Transforming Our Communities Planning Group uh on Wednesday, which is a partnership with uh UW ADAI on on a uh on an event that they're putting together in June. Uh, next week, we have our briefings, uh the meeting with a group from uh the Alderbrook Homeowners Association to talk about some uh. to talk about some water concerns that they have. Mason Transit, as well as a regular meeting of the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Have a discussion with Shelton School District regarding their academies and how they might expand their career pipeline academies. Also might attend the Legislative Virtual Update on the 24th. And then back for briefings and our commission meeting on the 28th.
Okay. First, I want to take you back in some of you, this group that you were talking about. So I got approached by a group that wanted to put together something like what we did with the opioid stakeholder group. And for those that don't know, Shelton had put together a group for the opioids. I can't say it's a stakeholder thing, but then it died. So in North Mason, Bo Bock and myself and others got together, and it turned into a big event, and it became an organization that has stayed around that Commissioner Shuji is on now that has been very beneficial, brought a lot of money, time, help to our community. So this group would like to get together and do the exact same thing that we did for opioid with mental health. And so I went ahead and got ahold of Bo so we could start to do the same process that we did. But since you're already doing the other one, I think it's probably better for me to step aside and have you, if you want, or if not, I'll, I'll stick with it. But we need to have that other group and stuff brought together with them. That would be wise to, to do it all from the beginning, along with our, our own community. Can't read my own writing. Okay, so I met with the Olympic Clean Air Regency, Clean Air Authority in regards to salary surveys. We started looking at some of the, the different salaries throughout the region regards to their employees. And some of that stuff we're going to need to talk about because there was some pushes to make some very, very, very large investments, I'll, I'll call it, but I don't. When you start having a conversation, somebody brings up that we need to have them as a 75th percentile in Thurston County. That's, we're all, we're Mason County, we're Collin', we're Jefferson. We're not just that. We need to have conversations. So we may have to have a conversation about that in the near future, and how we feel about that. If that happens, I've been working to try and, and keep that from happening. Left board, the cemetery board had a special meeting. North Mason balanced schedule. I actually attended the West Coast Legends Concert. I just had to say it because literally I'm bringing my youngest daughter who's 12. This is Ice Cube and, and Exhibit, and stuff like that. So my daughter who's 12, and I'm sitting there realizing that 20 years earlier, I brought my oldest daughter to see Exhibit in concert out there at the same time. So I was feeling pretty old, but I got pictures of it. It's okay. You can't really see much of it. The smoke is so thick in that place. You can hardly see the concert. It was pretty heavy. But with that being said, it was something. At least I, I did it again.
That's really, that's really great news for Exhibit though.
Yeah.
Good for him. Still, still out there.
20 years, yeah.
I'm just wondering about the smoke. What kind of smoke was that?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure it was just vape. Just, no, it was pretty bad. Considering, I hate to say I'm a goody two shoes these days when I was younger, but man, I was just amazed by it. I had to take pictures of it just because I was that amazed by it. I couldn't realize you could stop somebody from seeing a concert from all the smoke. So with that, I also had more meetings with ORCA since then, so we may be doing better off. ORCA Finance Committee. Yeah, I know.
Did ORCA know about this concert?
Let's just say I was a little more relaxed when I met for the, the next meeting. A little more open to any idea of 75%. So then we had a regular ORCA meeting after that. Hood Canal Compass Luncheon coming up. North Mason Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, Mason County Housing Authority, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, Mason Transit Authority Meeting. Youth Connection Gala, we may see each other there, but I may have to skip out early to go to North Mason Grad Night. And I'm working on meeting with the Secretary of Transportation. They reached out from that other meeting I told you guys about. We're, I actually mentioned to you, I think, during one of our meetings. But we have to speak with this person to see if we can make some changes in how they're viewing our projects here and realizing that our projects that we have are safety. It's not just that we just would like to have it. There's a huge safety issue when it comes to the bypass and, and the like. And if that gets ignored or not recognized as such, that's why they want to push it back. It's not personal. As many thought in the beginning may have been personal because of people who are not there anymore. It is a shift on how they're doing things there and what they are focusing on. They have a hard time seeing any new project go forward when there's so many safety issues in front of them. And so I'll respect that, but I'm going to meet with them. We'll have a talk and see if we can educate them to what we see as our safety issues.
I don't know if I can follow that one, man. You, you made us laugh.
Wow, man.
All right. So later on today, I have a Turning Point, a couple Turning Point meetings, fundraising, empower the purse. Tomorrow is our Legislative Steering Committee Roundtable, which is an amazing opportunity for commissioners to get together, commissioners and council members to get together and talk about issues that they have in their counties. It's amazing. We're not alone in our troubles. So that's cool. And then Thursday, regular LSC meeting. Also Public Works Board Executive Committee Meeting. Friday's Public Works Board Traditional Committee Meeting. Monday, the briefing and WASAC Virtual Assembly, Mason Transit Meeting. Also the Mason County Coalition Kickoff at Alderbrook. Wednesday is my brother's birthday and my granddaughter's birthday. There's the SWAC Meeting, Turning Point Board Meeting, Community Action Council Meeting, Public Works Board Executive Committee Meeting, Library Tour. I'll be going to the Sheriff's Breakfast on the 24th. Public Works Board Traditional Committee. And then Saturday is the Shelton Youth Family Mardi Gras. And that promises to be a lot of fun. I've been working with them for the past six or seven months on this, and so I'm super excited. I think it's going to be a lot of fun. Wear your Mardi, Mardi Gras vest.
I don't have.
Just get a mask. It'll be fun. Mondays are briefing, WASAC Virtual Assembly, the Mason County Central Committee Meeting. And then we're back on the 28th for a commission meeting. And hopefully I haven't missed anything. Sometimes because we have meetings every two weeks, we might be at the same meeting that might pop up. So just so people know, we will, on Mondays, we will make sure that we declare those. Anything else?
I had two to, two to add.
Nope. You had your chance.
Yeah, I know. I could wait until next Monday, but then I'll probably forget them too. I, I'll also be attending the Health Coalition kickoff on the 22nd, and then Mason GOP Lincoln Day Dinner on the 25th.
All right. All right. Can we, do we have anything else?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Promotion in a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.